Thank you Supervisor Mandelman. And at this time, Madam Clerk, we are going to go to public comment. And just want to remind every speaker, you will be allotted two minutes. As the clerk stated earlier, please refrain from directing your comments to any individual member or any items that were already heard at the board. This is specific to item 19's hearing. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have 27 listeners and 11 members of the public who are in the queue. If you are waiting to speak, now is your opportunity to press star three. That way you can get into the queue to speak. All right, thank you very much for waiting. And operations, can we please hear from the first caller? Hello caller. Okay, that must be a silent line. We will circle back to you. Let's hear from the next caller, please. Hello caller, are you there? Okay, another silent line. All right, let's go to the next caller, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, welcome.
Hi, my name is Keneal and I live in the Mission District. First of all, Happy New Year to everyone on the call. I'm calling for the Board of Supervisors to defund SFPD and the SF Sheriff as they set course on the new year. The community's call remains the same. We're seeking to find ways to defund the police and decrease policing, which is inherently biased by 400 years of institutional racism, and instead invest into life-affirming care, education, mental health care, social housing, violence prevention programs, transportation, saving our community service and workers, the things that truly keep us safe and can address the interconnected issues of racial disparity. With all due respect, on the call today and in calls past, we continue to hear a lot about this general commitment to improvement, but the 2016 DOJ assessment was already five years ago. The same promise for progress was made five years ago then and every year since, but what does the community have to show for it? I apologize that I might have missed the slides in Chief Scott's presentation, but from data easily made available to the public, SFPD reports that fewer than 15% of those 2016 reforms have been implemented as of last March. So, you know, again, we no longer want to compromise on the backs of our dead and harmed community members while we get our priorities straight. So, the police have not and never will provide real public safety. The city has continued to invest in systems of punishment and control which harm our communities. It's past time to divest from these harmful systems and focus on building the support and services that our communities truly need to stay alive and thrive. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, let's hear from the next caller. Welcome caller. As soon as you start speaking, I'll set the timer for two minutes.
Good afternoon, all Board of Supervisors. My name is Felicia Jones and I would just like to thank the Board of Supervisors for recognizing wealth and disparities in the Black community for our work that we've been doing for over five years to look at the data in regards to use of force, arrest, and racial profiling through traffic stops among African-Americans and Black people in San Francisco. So, the thing of it is, is that, you know, again, we don't want a checklist of the 272 recommendations. We want to bring the disparities down of Black San Franciscans. It is a horrible statistic as Supervisor Rona indicated around San Francisco Unified School District, because those statistics are not new. It's a pattern of how Black San Franciscans are treated in San Francisco, and it's not one of equity or equality or justice. And so, we stand to work with you. However, you have to be transparent. If you can't be transparent, then we can't move forward. And that's the whole issue around wealth disparities in the Black community, that we want to move forward in changing the disparities, the inequities of Black San Franciscans here. And we're willing to work with all of you if we're all on the same accord to want the same thing. Because definitely, if we don't, then Black lives does not matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Okay, operations, let's hear from the next caller, please. Okay, that might be a silent line. Let's move to the next caller. All right, welcome caller.
Hello, thank you. This is Magic Altman and I've been working on this issue since all of our dear Black and Brown people were murdered when they were in crisis and needed compassionate care going through the use of force policy. I have been at many meetings when Hilliard Heinz spoke, and they never, ever responded to anything that the public said, but they're kind of like prisons for profit, because they want to continue to make money and feed as parasites off our money. We don't need Hilliard Heinz anymore. We don't need this state reform. We have met with all of you over the last year about having a real program to defund the police for the purpose, the single purpose, of refunding the community in programs that will help our people with housing, with health care, with food, with rent. And this is the problem. You know, one of the first things that they took out of that police force report from the DOJ was to push tasers through. Now, all of a sudden, they could do that really quickly. Isn't that interesting? Now, I spent two years giving that decision to vote for tasers through the Sunshine Task Force to get two decisions unanimously would stop the tasers, which, by the way, the Police Commission refused to acknowledge because people don't respect the Sunshine Task Force. And you continue to thank the chief for all that he's doing. How about thanking the public for actually getting paid nothing and coming from our hearts to actually care about this? Because we are sick and tired of the cops. We are sick and tired. We don't, will never feel safe with policemen coming in our neighborhoods with guns. Never. I'm telling you, never. We're done with this. I went through the reform process for six years now. We're waiting for something to happen. This is ridiculous. And just find out how much Hilliard Heinz has made off our city. They don't want it to end. I am so tired of this. Thank us, work with us. We're done with police. We want real action that helps fund our communities and stop wasting our money on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Altman. Let's see here. The Board is taking public testimony specific to the SFPD's update to the Department of Justice findings and recommendations, the implementation within the department. This is also the public's opportunity to comment on whether or not to defund or reform the SFPD. I'm getting some inquiries from the public if they can wait until general public comment, and the answer is no. You cannot speak on this matter during general public comment. This is the opportunity to do so. So, let's hear from the next caller. Operations, can you please unmute the next caller, please? Welcome caller, we can hear you. We can hear you caller. If you turn down your television, that would help out. Or we have to go to the next caller. Okay, operations, let's hear from the next caller, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, welcome.
Hello. Okay, great, thank you very much. My name is Todd Snyder and I'm a constituent of District Five here in San Francisco. And I'm calling to demand accountability for our police department. In 2020, Black San Franciscans were more than six times as likely as white San Franciscans to be subjected to a traffic stop. And I like to judge my elected officials, including police officers, on the actual results that they produce, judging on actions rather than talk, which is cheap. So, in five years of reform, only 40 reforms out of a total of 272 have been officially designated as substantially compliant by the California Department of Justice. This is a failing grade, and I abhor the lack of urgency on this matter by Chief Scott and by the San Francisco Police Department. And if they're actually serious about change, they would radically ramp up these efforts instead of providing excuse after excuse while their budget increases year by year. So, the cost of these public safety officers is a drain on our city's coffers. It needlessly diverts money away from our actual daily necessities, especially public health, and increases the subjugation of one particular group of residents to excessive and deadly force. So, I ask again, are the Board of Supervisors going to actually hold the police department accountable for their utter failure? I don't, I don't know if everyone realizes the poor opinion of our San Francisco elected leaders right now due to the widespread corruption, not only of Nuru, but of just so many elected officials. And so, I urge them to actually do their jobs and hold the police department accountable.
Thank you, sir.
If they will not take these steps.
Thank you for your comments. I hate to cut anyone off, but we are allowing for two minutes for all the public commenters. So, operations, let's hear from the next caller, please. Welcome caller. I'll set the timer for two minutes when you start speaking.
Hi, my name is Lawrence and I reside in D9 on Alonea Land. I'm calling for the Board of Supervisors to 100% defund the SFPD and SF Sheriff. We, the residents of the city, are demanding for abolition, not reform. Every request for reform inevitably leads to the SFPD asking for more money. Money that can be spent on real care in the city such as free and affordable housing, mental health care, violence prevention programs, food equity, pre-muni, education, things that we actually need. The budget is, our budget is representation of our values, and we need a budget that puts communities first, not cops. So, reduce the size of the police force and get cops off the street. We demand the full defunding of SFPD and look forward to the new board members making real progress toward abolition. Black lives matter, abolish the police, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, let's hear from the next caller. I will, I will, before they are queued in, there are 34 listeners and there are 20 in the queue to speak. If you're one of the 34, at some point you'll press star three if you want to make your public comment today on these matters. Okay, let's hear from the next caller. Welcome caller.
Hello, my name is Anna Pragner. I'm from Indivisible, San Francisco, and I'm calling because I am disappointed to hear that while the San Francisco Police Chief and Board of Supervisors continue to talk about commitments, little gets done and Black members of our community continue to die. Real action is needed. I ask for real accountability. Cops who murder civilians need to be fired. Funding should go to impoverished communities. You've heard this many times before, but little has been done. Justice demands actions and not words. So, I expect the Board of Supervisors and the Chief of Police to begin with action. I also stand with wealth and disparities in the Black community's proposal, which requires all of the remaining reform recommendations to be completed by SFPD by the end of 2021, with ongoing oversight from Cal DOJ and the Board of Supervisors, which requires per-capita racial disparity reporting on arrests, use of force, and stops, which requires Felicia Jones, who called in earlier, I might add, to be a presenter at these hearings. And most crucially, I demand close oversight of SFPD to ensure the sharp reduction of anti-Black racial disparity, and that SFPD makes this its top priority to enact measures that reduce racist policing and show reduction in per-capita disparity, particularly in key areas such as use of force, arrests, and stops. If you really believe that Black lives matter, then you need to start doing things and not just talking. I am, I mean, curious to see what you do, and I hope that I do see action sometime soon. Thank you, goodbye.
Thank you for your comments. All right, next caller, please.
Hello, my name is Susan Bussin and I'm calling in support of wealth disparities in the Black community. I am in support of police reform, so it makes me very sad that tonight's presentation by SFPD is such a glaring example of racial bias. First, although it was nice to see that SFPD is attempting to use per-capita data, the very first slide presents crime data claiming that Black San Franciscans commit most of the crime in San Francisco. I doubt that entirely, but what is egregious is the juxtaposition with the next slide that presents per-capita data on arrest. Black people are being shown as being arrested disproportionately. Black people are being shown as arrested disproportionately, which is true, but by planting these seeds of bias from the previous slide, SFPD is essentially saying that arresting Black people in large numbers is justified. So, SFPD isn't biased or racist, Black people are just criminals. That's not even implicit bias, this is overt racial bias. Later in the presentation, during the section of use on force, someone said that Black San Franciscans are disproportionately involved in use of force incidents, as if they did it to themselves or with an act of God. By using passive voice, SFPD is trying to distance themselves from these incidents and distract from the fact that forces being used against Black people by police officers. I'd like to know if it was a fly on the wall in the meeting where this presentation was created. I'd like to know whether the bias in this report was calculated, or whether anti-Black bias is so ingrained in SFPD that even at the highest levels of command, they can't recognize it when it comes out of their own mouth. I've been reading that 2016 Spark Report for Oakland PD, and one of Spark's conclusions was that a major source of racial disparity in Oakland was the cultural norms and practices within law enforcement itself. So, if tonight's presentation is indicative of the mindset of SFP leadership, we are screwed.
All right, thank you for your comments. We have 22 callers in the queue. Operations, can we hear from the next caller, please?
I'm calling for the Board of Supervisors to 100% defund SFPD and SF Sheriff at every opportunity you get this year. I am calling today to clarify, we are not asking for reform. We are not asking for task force, task forces, or committees. What we demand is, what we demand is very simple. Cut the police budget to zero. Defund the police. Invest into life-affirming care, mental health care, education, social housing, violence prevention programs, transportation, save our community service, and workers, the things that keep us safe. The police have not and will never provide real public safety. The city has continued to invest in systems of punishment and control which harms our communities. It's past time to divest from these harmful systems and focus on building the support and services that our communities truly need to stay alive and thrive. SFPD has proven again and again that the police cannot be reformed. External studies continue to show an extreme level of anti-Black bias within the SFPD despite the so-called progress of the toothless reforms, yet even in the last year's historic protests, including in San Francisco, the Board only cut SFPD's entire budget by a mere 6%. This will be offset by future wage increases from renegotiation POA contracts approved in December. The Board also refused to fire a single SFPD officer. Meanwhile, on October 10th, 2020, SFPD shot and killed Desar Vargas, a man in crisis. One month later, while the Board was approving the POA's contract, SFPD shot twice, beanbagged, Antonio Estrada, who had been, had to be hospitalized with life-threatening injuries. Our budget is a representation of our values, and we need a budget that.
Thank you for your comments.
Put communities first, not cops. So, reduce the size.
Thank you for your comments. So, hey, I hate to cut anybody off. The Board is allowing two minutes per caller. We appreciate your patience, we appreciate your comments. Operations, let's hear from the next caller. Welcome caller. I will set the timer for two minutes when I hear you speak.
Great, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Great, thank you. My name is Kit Hodge. I live in District Seven, and I'm a core team member of wealth disparities in the Black community. I'm calling to let you know that I'm very concerned about the continued racial disparity and policing outcomes and the slow pace of reform thus far. This reform process has been going on since 2016, and still, a Black person is 10 times more likely to be arrested than a white person in San Francisco. In Minneapolis, where George Floyd was murdered by police last summer, that number is actually only seven times as likely. We are actually worse than Minneapolis. So, despite this, Chief Scott claimed earlier that 113, that the SFPD has completed 113 reforms of the recommendations to date. While it's true that they may have submitted that number as completed to the DOJ, the DOJ has yet to certify that the SFPD is in substantial compliance for those items. So, until that, there's actually proof from the DOJ, we ask that you stay skeptical and vigilant. In fact, I'm calling to ask you, as supervisors, to be proactive until both the DOJ certifies that SFPD has completed all 272 items, and, more importantly, that the racial disparity in policing has gone to zero. It is possible that that can get to zero, and it's something that we should be striving for every day as part of your work. Black lives matter, legislation for me matters, and budgets absolutely matter. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, operations, let's hear from the next caller, please. We have about 22 listeners in the queue. Welcome caller.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Ebony Eisler, and I have been a member of the wealth disparities group, and my concern is definitely for defunding the police. I've been a resident of the Bayview-Honest Point community most of my life. I was born here and I've left and returned, so I've been here, you could say, 42 years. And there was a time when the community policed themselves, because unfortunately, we did not have trust in the police department, and we could not rely on the police department. And I'll say, in 2021, not much has changed. I want to see some definite defunding of the police department, because what I observed is basically our police department responding when they have to, or when it's convenient. And unfortunately, it seems to be convenient to do your job as a police officer when you are addressing an issue with a person of color versus a person not of color. I am a muni operator, and I observe a lot of wrongdoing by a variety of people. And I just, I just want to see something different. I don't want to continue to see our tax dollars be wasted on people who are just milking the system and doing a job when it's convenient for them to do, to do it. I also would like to know what these police officers are hired for, you know, what, what are they actually told that they're being hired for? Is there any type of compassion or any, any, anything where, you know, the police officers are actually hired to be public servants and to try to aid and assist and de-escalate, you know, and change the direction of the community? I mean, I drive a bus through the tender line, and I'm like, it's a mess. It's a mess. And you have police officers that are there all times of day, and these people are doing drugs, they're, you know.
Thank you for your comments.
They're not doing anything.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments from one city employee to another. Thank you for your service, but also apologies to cut you off. We are providing two minutes for the callers to provide their public comment to the Board. We are taking public comment on the SFPD's update to the Department of Justice's findings and recommendations, implementation within the department. This is also the public's opportunity to comment on defunding or reforming the SFPD during general public comment. That will not be available as agenda content for you to comment on. So, with that, let's go to the next caller. Operations, I understand we have 20 who are ready to make public comment in the queue, 36 who are listening. At some point, you will press star three to get into the queue to make your public comment. Welcome caller.
Good evening, this is Jenny Raviv. I am part of Showing Up for Racial Justice San Francisco. I live in District Eight. Hey Rafael. I'm calling in support of wealth disparities in the Black community's proposal, demanding implementation of the DOJ reforms that were referenced and that Felicia Jones spoke about earlier. I ultimately am interested in us divesting and defunding SFPD, but, and that those resources go to actually create safety and security, mental health services, emergency medical services, firefighting, health care, public ed, permanent affordable housing, and so on. In the meantime, while we're forced to keep spending money on policing, implementing the recommendations and wealth disparities proposal is the minimum that can be done to address the long and well-documented anti-Black racist policing in San Francisco. I just want to end by highlighting a recent example of community-led de-escalation that illustrates the potential for safer outcomes when police are not engaged. A week ago, when an organization called Anti-Police Terror Project was holding a reclaim Amel Cave's Radical Legacy Caravan, and in response to Oscar Grant's family's request, continued demands for charges against the police who murdered him, they took this car caravan to make a gesture at DA Nancy O'Malley's house in Alameda, and they discovered when they arrived, a gunman who was standing outside his house and yelling, was really angry, was threatening folks. And organizers, and if I should specify, Black-led organizing a group and Black leadership were able to de-escalate this situation with an angry gunman without any use of force. Nobody got hurt. And so, I just mentioned that to say that there's tremendous potential in the community that we can, and we would like to make policing, by outside sources obsolete, that we take care of our own community. So, thanks so much for, for the opportunity to speak, and I hope that you'll support these reforms while we continue to have policing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, operations, let's hear from the next caller, please.
Hello, my name is Deborah Levy. I live in District Nine. I'm recently retired after working 25 years teaching at City College of San Francisco. I've lived in San Francisco all these years, and I am recently learning about the incredible disparities between the lives of so many of us, myself with so much privilege, and the Black community here. Or more likely, I'm being forced to really face what maybe I knew and, yeah. So, I am calling now in support of wealth and disparities in the Black community, and I am, you know, the idea, I really appreciate hearing on tonight's call and acknowledgement from the chief that we have serious flaws in our policing, but it's unbelievable that out of the 270 recommendations, that only 40, 272, that only 40 have been completed. So, I just want to call for, you know, support, that those must get completed by the end of this year. I support Supervisor Preston's comment and insistence on per-capita data by race for stops and arrests, and I take issue with Supervisor Mandelman, the attitude that this has been going on for a while and we're not really going to solve it right away anyway. We need more urgency. This cannot be allowed to continue, and I think that the community is standing up. San Francisco can be an example, and we have got to face this. This disparity really can't continue. I also want to add that I would like to see Felicia Jones be a presenter at the hearings. I so much appreciate her voice, and you all ought to hear this. To get these recommendations completed, you have to work with the community and listen. And the Board of Supervisors has to hold, has to be held accountable and hold people accountable to get through this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Before we call on the next caller, I do just want to remind folks.
Before we call on the next caller, I do just want to remind folks when they call in to please address your comments to the entire board and not to specific members of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Okay, operations, let's hear from the next caller, please.
Hello, this is Gloria Berry. I'm a resident in District Ten and I would like to first mention that I served eight years as a peace officer. I left as a sergeant. I'm currently a member of the DCCC where I'm chair of the Black Lives Matter Committee. I wanted to first note that at the Police Commission meeting and today's hearing, a lot of the slides are too small for the public to see. Please let's fix that. I'd like to thank Supervisor Preston for bringing up the per capita data. We shouldn't be holding a parade because use of force claims have went down when per capita still shows there's issues with the Black community with use of force and arrest. Also, I'd like to thank President Walton for bringing up that this is not a bias issue. It's racism. We need to stop coddling people and saying they have biases when it's racism. Also, I'd like to thank wealth and disparities for being the thumb on the pulse of this matters. And also, I'd like to bring up that Chief Scott Knight said that diversity was good, but at the Police Commission meeting, he stated struggles he had with promoting Black people. I'd also like to know if there's any info, if there's any quotas to stop and/or arrest people. And last, not last, but I'd like to ask that the Board of Supervisors appoint serious reformers to the Police Commission. And last, I am at my last point, call these hearings more often. It's too seldom these are held. Nothing's really been done. And I think I'm about to be cut off, but y'all have a good evening.
Thank you for your comments. My staff just sent me an email just indicating that they are going to take the slides from the chief's presentation and place them under the board's website under what's new. So you can take a copy from there or you can go to the legislative file. The file number is on the agenda and it's actually, I think, showing on the television or computer screen so that we can make it really accessible for members of the public who want access to the slides. Okay, operations, can we, let me just give you the file number. It's 200777 if you go to our legislative system. Okay, next caller, please. Welcome caller.
Hi there. My name is Dave. Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is David Arington. I am a resident of District One and I'm calling to voice my support for wealth and disparities in the Black community. And I'm calling because I am really concerned about the racial bias in policing in San Francisco. You know, I think there was a great call out that, you know, this is not just inherent bias. This is just out and out racism. Let's call it what it is. When we use words like implicit bias, it desensitizes people to it. And if hearing that we have racist police makes you uncomfortable, well, it's probably time to get uncomfortable, especially when we have statistics like Black San Franciscans are more than 10 times as likely to be arrested than whites. They're more than 10 times as likely as white San Franciscans to be subject to use of force. Six times more likely to be subject to a traffic stop. I think, you know, what we've noted is over the past five years, while we see the numbers go up and down, both with regard to the number of arrests, traffic stops, and use of force incidents, we're not seeing a change in the per capita incidence for the Black community. I'm really concerned about it. It's unacceptable. It needs to stop and we need to continue to measure it. I also echo wealth and disparities' demands to complete all 272 recommendations by the end of this calendar year. And I would like to note and kind of pile on to what a previous caller said, just because they say 113 has been completed, until that is substantiated by a third party, I'm not going to believe it. And I think that the Board of Supervisors needs to remain skeptical of what is reported until it is validated and conserved by a third party. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. All right, so we have 20 callers in the queue still and 34 who are listening. All right, operations, next caller, please.
So first and foremost, I want to remind everybody that this 272 recommendations that you're all talking about, you all do not know that when Donald Trump became the president, the first thing he got rid of cops. Cops stands for Community Oriented Policing Services. That's the first thing you want to know. The second thing is, the San Francisco Police Department has spent over 800,000 on consultants. And shame on you supervisors, because I never saw any one of y'all in the trenches. I know a lot about cops. And I met the police chief when he first came, face to face. So he knows me and I know him. Now, shame on you supervisors, without having a single meeting and consulting the community, giving the police department a raise. So on whose side are y'all? On whose side are y'all? There are crimes against community committed against innocent people and you supervisors have to be held accountable. You supervisors have to be held accountable. Crimes against community. Don't be assized by having hearings. It's not about hearings. It's about action. It's about accountability. It's about having your heart in the right place. Some of y'all are hypocrites. Hypocrites. Shame on y'all.
Thank you, Mr. DeCosta. Okay, operations, let's hear from the next caller, please. All right, that might have been a silent line. Next caller, please. Okay, hello, welcome.
Hello? Hello?
Please make your comments.
I'm calling to demand the Board of, to the Board to defund SFPD and the SFPD Sheriff's Department. Even after the murder of Caesar Vargas in October, followed by another officer-involved shooting in November, the Board still refused to fire a single SFPD officer. You need to do better. Continuing to invest in the systems of punishment and control harms our communities and will in no way lead to the changes our community needs. It's time to divest from these harmful systems and focus on building community supports and priorities that our community truly needs to stay alive. Police don't keep us safe. Housing, healthcare, education, and reparations keep us safe. Invest in the people and communities, not cops in cages. The facts don't lie. The scale of policing has not been shown to have any correlation or impact to reported crimes. In fact, a study done last year by the Vera Institute found that less than 5% of police arrests were related to violence. But what has been proven to be effective in reducing violence and harm within communities is having access to basic needs, resources, and community programs. We are not asking for reform. We are asking you to defund, disarm, and disband the SFPD and Sheriff's Department this year. Defund to zero. Defund to abolish. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, operations, let's hear from the next caller, please.
Hi, my name is Anne. I'm a resident of District Nine and I'm calling on the Board of Supervisors to defund, disarm, disband, and abolish the SFPD and Sheriff's Department this year. Apart from the deeply intertwined history of anti-Black racism, policies of containment, and policing itself, SFPD is a racist institution that solely exists to harm communities of color. Even after decades of so-called reforms, 76% of use of force, and let me just pause on that, three quarters of uses of force last year, in the quarter four, were against people of color. Black San Franciscans, who make up only 5% of the city's population, account for 40% of all police searches. You can't reform this. Policing exists to protect the interests of capital, not to keep our communities safe. Housing, healthcare, education, and reparations keep us safe. Invest in people and communities, not cops in cages, and help build lasting public safety for all of us. The people have spoken. We are not asking for reform and we will not stop until you defund, disarm, and disband the SFPD and Sheriff's Department to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, operations, let's hear from the next caller, please.
Hello, bootlickers. Oh, oops, I meant the Board of Supervisors. My name is Simona Maganelle and I live in District Eight. I'm calling for the Board of Supervisors to 100% defund SFPD at every opportunity you get this year. I'm calling today to clarify, we are not asking for reform. We are not asking for task forces or committees. What we demand is very simple. Cut the police to zero, defund the police, invest into life. I do not appreciate this individual's behavior, Mr. Preston.
I do understand that Supervisor Pesci, he did not make a comment towards any one individual and I know sometimes we may not agree with public comment, but they have a right to public comment. He may proceed.
Mr. Maganelle?
I want to say again, I do have the ability to call people names and to swear on this public comment. So thank you for clarifying. Fuck, 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 fuckity-fuck. I'm calling today to clarify, we are not asking for reform. We're not asking for task forces or committees. Invest into life-affirming care, mental healthcare, education, social housing, violence prevention programs, transportation, saving our community service and workers, the things that keep us safe. The police have not and never will provide real public safety. The city has continued to invest in systems of punishment and control which harms our communities. It's past time to divest from these harmful systems and focus on building support and services that our communities truly need to stay alive and thrive. In this hearing, the SFPD wasn't even able to provide data to the Board of Supervisors about use of force data. Just for your information, people on Twitter were able to compile that data and it shows that a whopping 40% of use of force incidents are against Black people and 25% are against Latinx people. That data is from Q3 of 2020 and that is consistent over the past three years. It hasn't bugged. Don't tell me that the police are doing jack shit to improve anything. Also, just last year, this board passed pro-police legislation that criminalized side shows. Even supervisors who are supposedly in favor of redirecting SFPD funds voted in favor of this legislation and it resulted in the death of someone here in SF, as predicted. The police don't ever do anything good. Invest in life-affirming care. Reform is unacceptable. Defund, disband, disarm, and abolish the SFPD. Nothing less is acceptable. No thanks for the ability to comment because this board hasn't been doing shit.
Operations, let's hear from the next caller, please.
Hello, my name is Sophie. I use she-be pronouns and live on occupied, alone land. Notice District Seven of San Francisco. Welcome, my girl. Your constituents are watching. I noticed Chief Scott, how you readily have statistics of what makes your force look good, like racial breakdowns and even sexual preferences of your police forces. But as Preston and other supervisors pointed out, you do not show the breakdown of who your diverse staff is brutalizing and traumatizing. As I learned from Blake, from People's Programs in Oakland, neo-colonialism is the integration of a colonized person into the colonized system in order to enact the policies of colonizers. I'm calling in to say that we, the people, deserve better than police reform. We deserve to defund the police now and abolish the police next so we can experience true public safety, which is free of an armed police force that protects whiteness and property above all else and promotes racism, ableism, sexism, misogyny, homophobia, transphobia, and all the other byproducts of white supremacy. We cannot reform the police, just like we cannot reform any of the above-mentioned ailments of this city and this world. We need to support each other as a community instead of tearing each other apart by policing, imprisoning, deporting, and invading. Everyone deserves food, shelter, education, and healthcare for both physical and mental well-being. We can pay for those things instead of policing and live in such a healthier world. With all love in my heart, I say we keep us safe. Stand together and stand strong. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, operations tells me we have 17 listeners, 17 callers in the queue ready to speak and 32 who are listening. If you want to speak, please at some point press star three. That'll get you into line to speak. Okay, operations, let's hear from the next caller, please. Welcome caller, we can hear you.
Hello, sorry. Yes, thank you. I'm multitasking and just heard I was unmuted. I'm Karen Fleschman and I'm calling in support of wealth and disparities in the Black community. I previously served on the Bias Work Group overseeing implementation of the 272 recommendations as they relate to bias. And I honestly, you know, don't think that the bias can be removed. When Dante King, the SFPD's trainer on bias, reported that 60 to 70% of the SFPD members he trained, 1,000 people at every level within the force, there was a lack of empathy, understanding, and absolutely no room for discussing the role policing has played in oppressing Black people for decades and centuries. In fact, it was Dante King's testimony to the Police Commission that caused the Vice President of the Commission, Damali Taylor, to resign because she also, who had previously served on the Bias Committee as well, just feels like we're not making any headway in actually ending bias within the department. You can come and make these presentations and present this data, but the work groups who are supposed, I mean, why aren't we testifying here? Why are you relying on Hillard Heinz, which is a for-profit company headquartered in Chicago, staffed by ex-Chicago Police Department, ex-FBI, and their other business line of business besides providing technical assistance to police departments is to provide private security to high net worth individuals? You can see it all on the Hillard Heinz website. So to compare them to the role of cops as a technical assistance provider is totally disingenuous, especially when San Francisco is spending our taxpayer money on Hillard Heinz to give this technical assistance, but they're ex-Chicago PD, like the worst police department in the country.
Thank you for your comments. Please accept my apologies for cutting you off. The board is authorizing two minutes per speaker tonight. All right, so operations, let's hear from the next caller, please. Welcome caller.
Hi, my name is Ben Paul. I'm in District Five, calling with wealth and disparities in the Black community. I'd like to thank the supervisors tonight who pressed on per capita reporting over time. I was amazed that SFPD said it would require a lot of resources. So we put these graphs together, took one of our members, 15 minutes to do this in Excel on a Surface tablet. You literally divide one number by the other. So surely SFPD with a $700 million budget can do it. What we've heard in this hearing is that's just not a priority for them. And that is just awful. It's horrific. How is understanding racial disparity not a priority? That was horrific to hear. So now the supervisors have the graphs showing that these disparities are not going down over time. They're at the bottom of the PDF we sent you this morning. Traffic stop disparities have actually doubled from 2016 where they were at 3X. Black folks were being pulled over compared to white folks in San Francisco. Now they're at 6X. So things are not getting better in terms of racial disparities. We actually, as Kit mentioned before, have a worse racial disparity than Minneapolis PD, which killed George Floyd. So in 2020, Black San Franciscans were over 10 times as likely as white San Franciscans to be subject to use of force, while Minneapolis PD, that rate was seven times. So we're worse than Minneapolis PD. So I stand with wealth and disparities in the Black community to require all reform recommendations completed by 2021, per capita reporting, Felicia Jones to be a presenter at hearings, and a sharp reduction of anti-Black racial disparity as shown in these statistics. at hearings, and a sharp reduction of anti-Black racial disparity as shown in these statistics. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, operations, next caller, please.
Hi, my name is Victoria Juarez. I'm a resident of District One, and I am here because I support wealth disparities in the Black community. I believe in Felicia Jones and the message of reform that she's been sending to SFPD for five years now. And I stand with the proposal, which requires all of the remaining reform recommendations be completed by San Francisco Police Department by the end of 2021, with ongoing oversight from Cal DOJ and the Board of Supervisors, requires per capita racial disparity reporting on arrests, use of force, and stops, requires Felicia Jones to be a presenter at hearings, and most crucially, I demand close oversight of the San Francisco Police Department to ensure the sharp reduction of anti-Black racial disparity, and that the San Francisco PD make its top priority to enact measures to reduce racist policing. I wholeheartedly agree that this is not a bias issue. This is a racism issue. This is anti-Blackness at play in what is touted as one of the most progressive cities in the country. I think it's ridiculous that we're seeing these numbers not improve and haven't seemed to improve over time. And it's just incredulous that it has taken this long for any progress to be made. I recognize that progress takes a long time, but I also remember the families, those who have been murdered by police officers, and the justice that they are demanding. And I stand with them, and I stand with wealth and disparities in the Black community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, operations, let's hear from the next caller, please.
Hi, my name is Nami. I am on unceded occupied Alone Land, and I'm calling to demand the Board to defund the SFPD and SF sheriffs this year. So I work with homeless individuals on a daily basis, and most of, if not all of the people I work with are afraid of the police. And if this isn't proof enough that police exist to protect property and not people, then I don't know what is. SFPD also upholds racism. I mean, so many people have quoted this statistic, but to emphasize, white people make up almost 5% of the city's population, but account for almost 40% of all police searches, and 50% of the jail population. And as someone who sees suffering on a daily basis, I urge the Board to defund and eventually abolish the police, because we need these funds for life-affirming care. Like, we need housing, we need healthcare. We need -- we don't need the police. By my witness, the police have done nothing for the communities I work with. And as a matter of fact, just harass them and use force inappropriately with them. For context, I am a 5'4", like, 100-pound person, and I go into encampments by myself and I'm fine. And I see police officers up in arms, like, harassing people for no good reason and not actually helping them all the time. And it just, it just really shows how little, how useless they really are, and how much they uphold wealth and class and racial divides. Yeah, so that's, I'm going to keep it short. That's all I have to say. Thanks to everyone else for being here to defund the police. Defund and abolish, thank you. Do I, like, end this? I don't know how this works.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, you can just hang up. Operations, let's hear from the next caller, please.
Hello?
Hello, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Catherine Brady, and I've been a resident of the city for about 35 years now. And I am calling just to, in support of wealth and disparities in the Black community, and I'm also a member of Indivisible Azav. And I just want to ask that the, all the remaining reform recommendations that the SFPD is supposed to complete are completed by the end of 2021 with ongoing oversight from the Cal Department of Justice. It's very clear from the many comments you have received and the actual facts that there is systemic racism on a level that has criminal consequences for people in our community. And I believe that it's very clear that the Board of Supervisors has not done enough about this problem. And it is really important to consider what needs to be changed, and the whole culture of our police department needs to be changed, starting with a greater degree of community involvement in the hiring process and more community review when officers violate the rights of citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, operations, next caller, please.
Hi there. My name is Ben Saunders. I'm calling with wealth and disparities in the Black community to support all of their demands, especially the completion of the 272 recommendations, and to ensure with ongoing reviews and hearings going forward, to make sure that SFPD is honoring their obligations to the citizens of San Francisco. I also want to reiterate that again, as from my college of share, it is excruciatingly simple to plot per capita over time, and hopefully made even more simple by the fact that we have gone out of our way to meet with SFPD to go over how we do our reporting and how they can implement, and heavily handheld them to the point that it's as close as you can get, as I was saying, like leading a horse to water. And apparently, there's still technical challenges, so I think that that's certainly a frustration that I echo here, that it shouldn't be anything close to technical challenges, especially as everyone's already said. And then I also want to speak just maybe kind of more generally to the comments you were hearing today. You know, the calls for abolition might seem kind of extreme to some of you here, but keep in mind these are people who've been, many of them, as we heard from one caller, reformers, who've been working in reforms for five years now, since the death of Maria Woods, the hands of SFPD officers. And we have not seen these disparities have changed. I know Chief Scott will talk about the per capita numbers have come down, but the rate of, you know, relative rate of Black communities facing use of force from police is still at the exact same proportion to the white community at around, you know, 11 times as it was four years ago. It's down maybe slightly, I think it was 13 times four years ago. So we're down slightly. And I think that the idea here is that these reforms here are bare minimum. It's showing that you're at least making some effort. And again, you know, it's hard to justify continuing to invest in that effort, when, as we know, it's a multifaceted problem, and no one here begins to think that, you know, this is all going to be solved by just eliminating implicit bias, or even eliminating systemic bias within SFPD. It's a larger problem. Talk about education, access to resources, and with $799 million in budget, if you can't find the money to do a basic reporting update, then maybe we can think about managing this budget deficit.
Thank you. Sorry to cut you off. Two minutes tonight. Okay, operations, before you send through the next caller, we have 13 callers in the queue, 27 who are listening. At some point, if you'd like to provide public comment on these issues, you've got to press star three during this hearing. During general public comment, these topics will not be allowed. Okay, so, operations, next caller, please.
Hi, my name is Emily, and I reside in D9 on Alone Land. I'm calling for the Board of Supervisors to 100% defund SFPD and SF sheriffs at every opportunity you get this year. Abolish the police, fire cops. SFPD and the police do not provide public safety. They never have, they never will. Stop investing in a violent racist ableist system. We need to invest in systems of care and fund communities. We need free and affordable housing, mental health care, violence prevention programs, food equity, free muni. Tonight, while it's cold and rainy and miserable outside, our unhoused and vulnerable neighbors need shelter and permanent housing while our mayor cruelly seeks to deny these lifesaving services. We need services that help people survive and thrive. We all know reform doesn't work. The police were designed this way, going back to 500 years of white supremacist, stubborn colonialism. You can't reform that. You have to abolish. The problem is that elected officials have repeatedly failed to dismantle such police violence. Instead of, instead of doing that, the Board of Supervisors made a mere 6% budget cut in 2020. But this is going to be offset by the massive multi-year wage increases of SFPD that you approved during, in December, through the POA contract. You defund schools and muni and healthcare more than you defund the police. Last year, thousands of San Francisco's students marched in the streets for Black Lives Matter and to defund the police, and the Board couldn't commit to firing even one single police officer or sheriff. Meanwhile, on October 10th, 2020, SFPD shot and killed Caesar Vargas, a man in crisis. And one month later, while the Board was approving the POA contract, SFPD shot Trike Dean Baggs and Case Antonio Estrada, who had to be hospitalized with life-threatening injuries. Our budget is a representation of our values, and we need a budget that puts communities first, not cops. We demand the full abolition of SFPD and SF sheriffs, and look forward to working with the Board to make real progress toward defunding. Abolish the police, Black Lives Matter. And also, you should be just as upset about the police turning Black Lives and Brown Lives --
Thank you for your comments. Apologies to cut you off. I'm sorry about that. Two minutes tonight. Okay, operations, next caller, please.
Hello, my name is Anne Marie Donchacore. I'm a resident of District Seven, known for wanting to protect property, but I'm very, very concerned about the continued racial bias and problems with policing in San Francisco. I was part of the Justice for Maria Woods Coalition, and we had a family emergency that called me away from this kind of work for four years, and I feel like, kind of like, riptide and wrinkled, and waking up and finding that nothing has changed, and then getting up to speed on this issue with the real wisdom that's in the wealth and disparities in the Black community and Felicia Jones. I'm pretty horrified that the Department of Justice recommendations are still hanging and lots of excuses, and it just did the same thing. And I really, especially with the protests that were going on over the summer and more awakening across the country, definitely come around to the position of abolition. And definitely, when people talk about accountability for the police department, I think from the Board of Supervisors' point of view, it comes down to funding. And so, defunding, I think, is a top priority. And as another caller has said, in the meantime, we need to work very hard with what's left of the police department to make sure that we're not having racial disparities, racial disparities, racism, as Mr. Walton said. So I think that this side of town, we're definitely also very concerned about continuing the racist policing of the San Francisco Police Department. And Chief Scott referred to industry standards, and it really made me cringe, because the truth of it is, is it is an industry, and the police, the POA is pushing back on all of this, and I think we need to stand up to them, and we'll definitely support the Board of Supervisors to reduce the funding for San Francisco Police Department until we've abolished. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.